And live streaming to YouTube. So we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, October 12th, 2020 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call.
Vote.
Vote.
Director Merschbrack.
Hi.
Director Anholt. Director Tominski.
Hi.
Director Borcherting.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
President Humble.
Aye. We'll move on to public hearings. Tonight, we have three public hearings. The instructional time reporting and hours versus days for the 2021-22 school year, the issuance of not to exceed $45 million school infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue refunding bonds, and to consider participating in the instructional support levy. Board Day, do we have any correspondence related to any of the public hearings on tonight's agenda?
President Humble and members of the board, I did receive one email and I will be speaking to the public hearing related to the instructional support program when we get there.
Thank you. We'll invite our public speakers to address the board. I'd like to remind those who have requested to address the board regarding the public hearing to please state your name and address for the record. You will be given up to five minutes for your remarks. I'm sorry, did I do that right? Okay. Laurel, will you call our first speaker? And she will serve as our timer and each person will be given up to five minutes.
President Humble, we do not have a speaker for our first public hearing.
Okay. Next, we'll move to the public hearing for the school infrastructure. Laurel, will you call our first speaker?
President Humble, we do not have a speaker for our second public hearing.
And lastly, we have the public hearing regarding the instructional support levy. Laurel, will you call our first speaker?
And again, this speaker was not able to join us this evening, but did ask me to read on her behalf. The speaker tonight is Angela Dew and she lives at 6832 Spear Point Court. Her comment this evening is, "I believe that the teachers are doing everything they can and are going above and beyond in these unprecedented times. I've observed that my middle school students have from 40 to 60 students in each of their remote synchronous classes. What plans are in the works for bringing down the student-teacher ratio? In the meantime, how are you supporting our teachers so that they can focus on teaching their subject areas and providing timely feedback on homework, quizzes, and tests?" Those are the end of her comments.
Thank you. What will happen now, we will close our public hearings and we will move on to our superintendent's report. So I will turn that over to you Superintendent Bush.
Thank you, President Humble. I will share my screen so that we can take a look at some things that have been happening over the past couple of weeks together. Can you see my screen?
I can.
I don't think I did that. I think I'm going to ask for Justin Schaefer. It looks like I am not able to share my screen. Oh, there it is. Now I can. Now I have it. There we go. Perfect. Sorry about that. Here we go. Okay. So thank you, everyone, for attending tonight and just a few updates from superintendent perspective. Today was a day for families to adjust their return-to-learn decision. We have had three weeks of school and wanted to give families enough time to get settled into either their choice of in-person or remote instruction. We realized that in some of our settings, due to the building damage, some folks aren't given a great choice at this point in time. However, today was the day where we asked families finalize their decisions if they wanted to change from remote to in-person or from in-person to remote. Looks like we have better than 400 students represented in our data. It actually might be closer to 500 by the end of the day today of families that were switching from one to the other. And so we will spend this week looking at communication with principals and as we look at the data, shifting what might be students from one environment to the other environment, which may impact staffing and certainly staffing support. So we will follow up in a week's time here with decisions and be able to communicate that with families about their selected choices. Secondly, a week ago, we worked with the Doubletree and the US Cellular on an ACT testing day. I am so proud to say that the testing that got canceled in the spring was able to be rescheduled for October 6th. And as you can see in the picture in front of you, this is, I've been to many concerts in the US Cellular and I will tell you, this might be the best visual that I've ever had at the US Cellular. Our graduations are awesome, but to see our community wrapping their arms around our kids to support something that's very important to us and that is equity and access. As a district, this is our second year in which we provided the ACT for all of our junior students. Because they were juniors in the spring, they're now seniors in the fall. So most of the students taking this test were seniors. And we had over 600 seniors take advantage of this testing date. Many of them have already taken their ACTs for their fall college choices, but very, very proud we were able to do that. And just as an anecdote, the ACT testing dates and locations have been hard to find. And so we actually had some other districts call us and say, hey, could we have this individual circumstance? We have this individual student. Could you help us out and allow them to take the test as well? And so I worked with ACT on just a couple of those examples, but certainly this is for our students. And what was really cool is the US Cellular and Doubletree used the school colors on some of the lighting effects they could do in the room. So green and yellow were Kennedy and blue and white Jefferson as an example. And just the staff there was just tremendous and our own staff, well over 50 members of our staff to support the testing date. So, and look forward to the results from that, but our kids deserve the opportunity and we were glad to provide it. We've been working on some family engagement and there's a data point in the middle of the screen here. We will have four rounds of this work and that is an individual staff member reaching out to individual children before the school year started or within the first few weeks of school to see if kids are getting what they need, families are getting what they need. And our second round of those calls will be coming up as well. But we were able to pull from that first three weeks of school. We've made over 11,000 contacts of individual staff members reaching out to individual students. And some of these numbers might represent more than one contact for a student. So perhaps one family was contacted, but they had more than one student and made it in one phone call. However, we like it to be pupil counts. And so just excited about this being our first round with this data. So the goal is that 100%, of course, that our kids get contacted and just very, very proud of our staff members. This has been a huge lift of work, but producing a lot of results with personal relationships and finding out what kids and families need, especially under our current circumstances. So that was interesting and celebration data. And just as an update, the district launched its district dashboard related to COVID. We've had the COVID-19 Health and Safety webpage on our website. However, now we've added, after we've gotten three weeks of school, our reported cases as well for students and staff. So just remind folks that that's available and we will update that weekly. And our numbers are pretty low. And so in those circumstances, when you look at individual numbers, we cannot associate that by a building because that can cause individualized data to be associated with an individual. And so we want to protect, of course, the safety of our students and staff. But as if numbers were to get higher into double digits with any building, we could perhaps report by building. At this point in time, we're keeping it at district-wide data. If there's additional questions, certainly can reach out to our health offices regarding those questions. And so we will continue to learn through the COVID-19 pieces and we're getting feedback from staff and from families within this first three weeks of school and adjusting along the way and making those adjustments. So just want to thank our staff members and our families for reaching out with questions and giving us some feedback on what we can do to better serve everybody, keeping safety as our number one priority. And so that's all I have for you this evening. And again, thanks so much for the opportunity to share.
And thank you for the information you have shared with those listening and those on the Zoom call. As we move forward, it's a work in progress. So I thank you Superintendent Bush and your administrative staff and everybody, the teachers, everyone affiliated with our school that will continue the great work that we're doing. Do we have any board reports?
President Humble, I do have a very quick board report. And that is just, I really want to thank our administration for having the foresight of providing some remote locations for students to use for hubs. On Wednesday, I was able to stop into the public library and see our hub that was there. And it was, it was great to kind of watch the students getting after it and getting after the work. There were students that were there that are kind of regulars and then there were a few students that were there that were there only for that day because they'd had a power outage at their house. And I think our infrastructure is still pretty fragile when we're talking about accessibility and electricity citywide, still a little bit in relation to deratio. So I think it's just a tremendous opportunity that we have those additional spots for students to engage. It was, it was great to see, to see that happening. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other board reports? Next, we will move on to communications delegations and petitions. We'll invite our public speakers to address the board. I'd like to remind those who have requested to address the board to please state your name and address for the record when called. You will be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and inform you when your time is up. Additionally, in order to abide by the open meeting law, I'd like to remind our speakers that there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individuals speaking, individual or individual speaking. Laurel, will you call our first speaker, please?
Our first speaker. Thank you, President Humble. Our first speaker this evening is Cindy Ritchie. She is representing CREA, the Cedar Rapids Education Association, and her topic is teacher issues.
Hello, my name is Cindy Ritchie and I live at 4600 Coventry Lane Northeast. I'm the CREA secretary and I'm representing 300 CRCSD educators who responded to a CREA survey in the past week. On our survey, we asked educators how many hours outside of contract time they're spending on planning, grading, and contacting families. The weekly average for planning was 11 and a half hours. The average for grading was four hours and the average for contacting family was four hours. Combined, that's nearly 20 hours outside of our contract weekly. That could account for the 86% of our educators who said that this year's workload is much more than in previous years. One of the things that CRA asked our district to do before the school year began was to try and limit the number of initiatives, new initiatives that were implemented this year. Based on the results of this survey, I would say that hasn't quite happened. There are four topics that I want to talk about that came to light on our survey. The first one was about the family engagement phone calls. Let me tell you a little bit about this initiative. Every student in the district has been assigned to a teacher. Depending on the grade level, the teacher may or may not have that student in their class. The expectation is that the teacher will communicate with the parent of that student one time each month. The phone calls or Google meets are expected to be between 15 and 30 minutes in length with a predetermined topic. Teachers were given training during pre-service on how to conduct these communications. If a teacher isn't able to make contact with the family, they are to try again until they have been able to make contact. Upon successful completion of the phone call, they are to log the interaction in the Infinite Campus Student Log. Here are some comments from our educators. An elementary educator who'd been teaching for 12 years said, "I believe having to make a 15-minute Google Meet with each and every family monthly is too much. Outside of one hour that's given to us on Friday, this is all done on our own time. Having to make three to four attempts is too much. With 25 students on my roster, that's a minimum of 375 minutes or more than six hours each month that I spend on this, not including the times I call and don't get an answer." The next big topic that came up was about the option that was recently offered to K-8 students to change their learning environment. One elementary teacher said, "The switch in verbiage of families being allowed open and free choice to change learning options prior to the end of the semester, as originally communicated, is a very big stressor right now. Currently, I have 13 students in my classroom that are not able to currently social distance six feet apart. Adding additional students to my classroom roster will further decrease social distancing measures, not to mention, we're going to need to restart the beginning of the year again, developing relationships, reteaching procedures, completing additional diagnostic assessments, et cetera." The next topic was about COVID and masks. Another elementary teacher, 13 years in the district, says, "I wish that the district would provide cleaning supplies for each classroom. Teachers are spending a lot of personal money to buy cleaning supplies. This includes wiping things down and being able to clean the floor as students are eating in the classrooms." Another teacher of six years said, "Mask wearing is not being enforced. Kids are going most of the day not wearing masks properly, not social distancing, and being in each other's faces. Social distancing and mask wearing does not seem to be a concern." A middle school teacher of five years said, "I've had students going home with COVID symptoms for two, for the past two weeks. There's no notification for families, for other families in my room that their child might, may have been exposed after eating with that student for two meals a day. I chose to teach in person this year, knowing this year would be an impossible year, but I continue to feel like my health is expendable by the district when changes are made that directly increase the chances of my students and I being exposed to COVID." Which leads to my final teacher, my final topic of teacher morale. A high school teacher of 14 years said, "When is the district going to start trusting us and let us just do our job? Stop piling on extra things that we literally don't have time to do. We should not have several nights a week where we don't even get to see our own children. Teacher morale is low and so many of us want to quit because we feel like we're everyone's minions. Between the district and parents pulling us from every angle, we are getting burned out." And this one really made an impact on me. An element, a new elementary teacher in their second year of teaching said, "I'd like to share the toll this has taken on my mental health. I am now taking medication for anxiety. My classroom is maxed out and I'm expected to be ready to fit four or five more bodies in there. I'm scared for my students' safety, my safety, and the staff in my room." And finally, a middle school teacher of 23 years said, "This year is different than any other year and I am so, so very tired. Please help us. We need help." So my ask for you is to let us, help us do what we do best and that is educate our students in our district. I would like that the district talk to our teachers and see how they're doing, not just the leaders, because they're the ones in the trenches really fighting the fight. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Cindy, for your comments.
Our next speaker is Anne Heubner and is going to be representing Cedar Rapids Education Association and her topic this evening is workload of remote elementary teachers.
My name is Anne Heubner. I live at 390 Ascot Lane in Robbins. Thank you for giving me the time tonight to bring to your attention the immense workload that is being put on remote teachers and to share with you some solutions that we have suggested. We are trying to do something that has never been done before to the best of our ability. We are building a plane while we are flying it. I knew when I went into teaching that it was not going to be a 40-hour-a-week work job. But I have never worked more hours in my 30 hour, my 30 years of teaching before. I'm working between 60 and 70 hours a week since pre-service. I'm teaching 38 first graders from four schools, which is almost double the class size of many of the in-person classes. These first graders did not finish kindergarten and have not been in school for the past six months. I have spent, I spent many hours before school started to plan a virtual open house and parent information night. I have spent many, many hours contacting the 38 families that I serve to schedule and complete 15- to 20-minute conferences with each of them monthly. Then, taking time to log all the details of those conferences into Infinite Campus. By the way, I feel fortunate because many of my remote elementary school teacher colleagues have well over 40 students. Many of the parents of my 38 students are texting, emailing, and calling me daily. I spend time addressing their concerns, answering their questions, and troubleshooting their technology issues. I work to take a curriculum that was designed for in-person learning and convert it to a virtual curriculum. Each lesson that I teach has to be adapted to a digital platform that is developmentally appropriate for six-year-olds. Then, I also have to plan assignments for the asynchronous time that the students have that day. I work to provide meaningful feedback to all my 38 students on their assignments. I work to assess their skills, analyze that data, and plan for individualized instruction. I spend a lot of time learning new technologies and my husband is such a good sport. He'll pretend to be one of my students so I can practice before I roll it out to my students. Then I have to plan for how to train the students on the technology and the parents on that technology. I spend a lot of time communicating with the staff at the four schools that I serve. I have frequent communications with all four principals, the four instructional coaches, the counselors, the ELL teachers, and special education teachers that, for the 38 students I serve. I also have to attend IEP meetings for the six special ed students I have in my class, virtual teacher-staff meetings, weekly grade-level PLC meetings, and professional development training. All these things cannot be done in the time allotted to me. I didn't even mention the hours that I spend each day working to engage my 38 students in synchronous learning. That's the best part. I'd like to offer a few suggestions that we have brought up. Our district could hire more teachers on temporary contracts to teach virtually to reduce class sizes. Groups of teachers could be paid to work outside of contract hours to design lessons that adapt the in-person curriculum to the virtual curriculum, like was started this summer. Or we could be given a curriculum that is designed to be taught virtually. Also, virtual teacher, I'm really worried as some students transition back into the buildings for in-person learning that there'll be a big shift of more students put into my class. And like Cindy said, all that reteaching of procedures and the class numbers go up. Let's please, as kids shift back, keep our numbers smaller. The last thing that I think would really help that I'd like to suggest and that we've brought up is allowing the remote teachers to give asynchronous learning on the early release days. Also during that time, synchronous learning could happen from teacher librarians and from counselors to provide students those lessons that they are not receiving now. Our virtual students get no counseling lessons, no teacher librarian lessons. Those could happen on Fridays. Then we could hold office hours on Fridays, communicate with parents, meet with students who need to make up work and assessments. We could use that time to meet longer in our PLCs and divide up that workload. We're all reinventing the wheel in isolation. We could use that time for more training and implementation for grade-level specific things. We could implement these solutions and reduce stress on teachers, reduce illness, reduce burnout, like Cindy talked about. Please support these solutions that I've suggested and help the teachers. We so appreciate your commitment to the district and your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, for your comments.
Our last speaker is Chris Rawls. Chris is here tonight to talk to us about return to in-person hybrid model instruction.
Good evening. My name is Chris Rawlvis and I live at 2027 Red Rock Drive Southwest. I'm currently teaching American history and behavioral studies to students in grades 10 through 12 at Jefferson High School. I also teach US history to juniors that are concurrently enrolled at JHS in Kirkwood. I am also a member of the Cedar Rapids Education Association. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our Board of Directors and District Administration for their leadership during these difficult times. Despite the challenges posed by the COVID-19 pandemic and the deratio of August 10th, we have continued to carry out our mission of serving the many needs of our students and families in our district. The repairs to two of our high schools and some of our middle schools are ahead of schedule, which is undoubtedly a good thing. As someone who pays property taxes in this district, I certainly want our school buildings open to serve students and staff. However, as someone who has been teaching classes remotely since late September, I've seen students and staff adjust to this process. And for the majority of the 10th and 12th grade students I've worked with so far this year, I'm seeing rising levels of engagement in my classes. Just this past Friday, I was able to host a class discussion over Google Meet with three of my concurrent enrollment classes where each student was able to participate verbally as we would do in a face-to-face setting. Later that day, I was in a meeting with two Kennedy teachers, once again over Google Meet, where we shared more strategies that will help elicit more student engagement in the future. I look forward to using these strategies in my other classes, which will help bridge the disconnect we see between students and teachers in the remote setting. I understand that our superintendent and district administrations need to open our buildings to meet the needs of our community and to fulfill the governor and the Board of Ed mandates that have been imposed on us by the state. As someone who will be tasked with implementing this hybrid model, what could this look like from Room 120 at Jefferson High School? As I see it, all students will be wearing masks that cover their nose and mouth. There will be no group work. I will keep students six feet apart and I'll be wearing a mask and face shield at all times. Students will not get within six feet of me anytime during the school day if I can help it. Unlike what students are currently experiencing now in the virtual environment, students won't be able to see or hear me speak clearly. Outside of the classroom, the student experience will be very different as there will be little opportunity to socialize in our hallways or at lunch. A premium should be put on keeping students and staff safe from the virus in all our schools when one in five Iowans have tested positive for COVID-19. I would like to respectfully request that the Board of Directors, Director Superintendent, and District Administration to communicate clearly what the in-person learning experience will look like for high school students if they choose to return to any element of in-person learning. It is my feeling that some of our students and families do not have a complete grasp of the limitations we will be operating under when we implement the hybrid model. I believe my earlier comments are an accurate account of how teachers and staff will be attempting to navigate this environment as we attempt to work with students in person and keep ourselves from contracting this hideous virus. It is my professional opinion that if students and families are able, they should choose to participate in their classes remotely for the remainder of the 2021 school year. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments.
President Humble and members of the board, that concludes our comments for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to our consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like to pull for a comment, question, or a separate vote? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? This requires a roll call.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Merschbrack.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Newman. Director Anholt. Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
President Humbles?
Aye. Uh, next we'll move on to administration. We now have the resolution regarding the issuance of not to exceed forty-five million school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue refunding cell bonds in one or three series. Do we have a motion for this, for the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Are there any further, are any further questions for Dave? Uh, this requires a roll call.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Merschbrach?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
President Humbles?
Aye. Next is the resolution regarding the author- authorization to set perimeters for the cell of school infrastructure cells, services, use tax revenue bonds, and approval of the official statement. Do we have a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Are there any further questions for Dave?
I have a question real quick. I don't have the agenda in front of me. Was this the, um, ten million for the Jackson project?
Yes, it is. This will actually be one of, uh, two bonds that will be issued, uh, for Jackson. We're doing it in two installments to make these issues bank-qualified that we feel like, uh, going out of this way, we're gonna have more, um, competitive bids come in if they were a bank-qualified issuance in, uh, in, in this economy. So we are, uh, uh, that's what our, uh, Piper Jaffrey has recommended. Um, this is probably our best, uh, way to handle this. And so this will be round one, and so this will be issued before the close of the year. And the second round for the bonds will be issued in twenty-one. And, um, and but we're also going to cash flow portion of the Jackson as well with some of our, uh, safe, uh, revenue that we have on hand.
Any other questions? Thank you, Daddy. Uh, this is a roll call vote.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Merschbrach?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
President Humbles?
Aye. Uh, next is the resolution regarding the consideration for participation in the instructional support levy. Do we have a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, do we have any further questions for Dave? Seeing then, this recall, this is a roll call vote.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Merschbrach?
Aye.
President Humbles?
Aye. Finally, we will turn this next presentation over to Superintendent Bush, John Galbraith, and the architects of the new elementary school for an update on the new elementary school project located on Jackson Elementary property and the Coolidge Elementary property.
Thank you, President Humbles, and honored to be here tonight to provide an update of where we currently are with this work. Uh, as you know, we were in deep conversations about this last year. And the work certainly has continued on our new, um, elementary, number one, on the Coolidge site. And then, of course, uh, the work has moved forward for the planning of that second elementary that will be on the Jackson site. So just want to provide a high-level overview as we did last winter already. Uh, we had a large work session, if you recall, uh, around our facility master plan and during that time, um, wanted to make sure that everybody understood the phases of the original, uh, facility master plan that was unfolded several years ago. These projects at the Coolidge site and the Jackson site are part of what we called Tier One and the Phase One portion of that tier, which is just these two elementary sites. The third elementary impacted by this work is, of course, Truman, which would be our first elementary in the facility master plan to be repurposed. And so as indicated on the screen in front of you, it's also intended after these first two projects and the repurposing of this elem- of Truman is to put a pause on the plan and to consider the work as we move forward to see what's best. Um, also at that pause on the plan, look at our enrollment again, look at our, uh, landscape of our entire community. Certainly, our most recent events could be even impacting where people are living and as well as, uh, the areas within our geographical location where they might be, um, taking their children to school. So, uh, we are continually gathering this data, and I'll talk about this for our current state in Tier One, Phase One. But we are indeed on Tier One, Phase One, and we even generated a small focus group last year to talk about what that pause looks like on the plan. Be generating that again, things, of course, got interrupted, um, by our crises of the pandemic and, uh, also the duratio, but want to resurface that work and get our community re-engaged with this pause and what that might look like as we move forward with our projects. So, our current state is that we've been working with, of course, our building administrators at Coolidge, Truman, and Jackson on all of these processes and continually getting input from them as we move forward in supporting our children and our families and, of course, our staff through this transition as we plan the next couple of years. We know that we, um, need to execute our boundary plan. And so last spring, we re-engaged with RSP to get new data as the data that was engaged with the facility master plan a couple of years ago. Granted, that is not that old. We thought, let's get the most current data as, as we possibly could. We had hoped to generate this conversation in the spring with our community, but again, we're not able to do so because of the pandemic. However, we do have that data that was, uh, collected from RSP. We now have a really interesting transportation data tool where we're able to get very accurate information about the location of our families, the routing plans, as well as the, um, boundary studies or the current boundaries within our school district, um, uh, lines. And then we'll be looking, of course, at the enrollment over the past five years. Although this, uh, current Tier One, Phase One impacts these three primary elementary schools, they do, um, boundary up to a couple of other elementary schools. So we want to make sure we're looking at the whole scope of the West Side plan as we move forward, um, especially as we consider the pause, um, after that second elementary is built. So we're gonna analyze this current data and make sure that we have it presented in a way that's understandable to, um, our general public. Would like to, and that's through this month. Then we want to make sure we take it to our stakeholders to get input and that they understand what our data is telling us. What does our population data tell us? What does our birth projection tell us? What does the, um, real estate projection tell us? As well as there's some new building, as you know, going out on the West Side. Does that change, of course, our enrollment out there or not? And then, um, as well as our transportation boundaries. After we present that information to community, we'll probably certainly hold some virtual town halls and maybe perhaps, um, some input in a socially-distanced way, perhaps in one of our high school gym areas. Then we will process that input from, um, those community conversations, bring it back to the centralized team and make some recommendations so that we can communicate in the winter what these new boundaries will be, especially that will impact our Truman families. Secondly, we have to, as you know, on board members, we have the board policy around naming new buildings. These are considered new buildings. They're being built on current site locations, but they are new buildings. So years ago, on board policy said that we had to name buildings after presidents. That has been no longer been the policy for decades, actually. We have Wright Brothers, which is, uh, have impacted the name of the Wright Elementary. We have Viola Gibson, another great example of two individuals or two buildings that haven't been named necessarily after presidents. Metro High School is named after a location in our town. So we want to make sure that we're using current board policy to consider the naming process. And we thought what would be really good is to make sure we get children's voices and our families' voices involved. So the principals will be launching a lesson with the kids at Truman and Coolidge and Jackson to, um, go through a submission process, and they would understand how to submit names or their considerations and the reason why they would submit a specific name for a school. We hope to narrow down that list with a group of staff and student leaders, pare down the list, that could be able then go to a community and staff vote that we would be able to then bring a recommendation to the board later this winter. So we're excited about that process and implementing it and really excited that it starts with children's voices. And so lastly, I want to hand this over to, um, Mr. Galbraith, who can give an update on our new elementary site at Coolidge and how things are going before we hand it over to OPN to talk to you about the new Jackson site.
Thanks, Noreen. Um, so I just am gonna present a couple pictures here, because they say pictures, um, however that saying goes. I'm drawing a blank now. Pictures are worth a thousand words. Um, anyways, and I don't know how many of you have been out by the Coolidge site to see this, so um, I'll kind of give a quick summary of the progress, um, through the pictures here. So the two pictures you're looking at here, um, I'm kind of in the further background with the roof on is, um, the gymnasium, gymnasium area. Um, in the area there, uh, with the precast panels still standing and the dirt interior is the cafeteria, um, and kitchen area. So progress is, is moving along very, very well, I think. Um, the duratio obviously threw a little bit of hiccup and did cause a little bit of damage out there that set us somewhere in the the four to five-week timeframe, um, back. But the good news is, um, the schedule is, um, we're not gonna be done quite as early as we'd like, but we are gonna be done by the first day in school, so that's the important part. Um, we'll probably have a busy summer, next summer, getting things moved in and teachers moved in, but um, kind of play the hand we're dealt there, and we're gonna make the best of the situation and be able to open school in August for the kids of the Coolidge community. The other area of the building you see there is kind of the office area, um, and specials. Um, Noreen, if you can go to the next slide, I think you're controlling this. I'm assuming you're controlling this, I guess. Perfect, thank you. So the picture on the left there, kind of the, the first wing that you see that just is a bunch of concrete, that's the specials area. Um, to the right of that would be the main office. Uh, the area of the building there with the sloped roof, that is the, the safe room, which is the, uh, the kindergarten area of the building. Um, and then to the right of that is the two-story academic area. Um, I'm not sure what, what, uh, grades that'll be, but it's the two of the houses or the pods that we've been calling them. Um, and then same within the further distance there, that's the other, um, two-story structure that's another grouping of pods. So like I said, progress is, is made daily and, um, we won't be done quite as soon as we would like, but we'll still meet the first day of school deadline um, with a few weeks to spare to get everybody settled, but it will be tight. But like I said, with the cards that were, were dealt, um, contractors, they're moving as long as best they can. Um, and we're still gonna have kids in the building in August, so that's exciting.
Thank you, John, for that, uh, for the visuals and the update. And although, um, the duratio interrupted us somewhat, uh, and maybe not as much as we thought uh, could impact at least the timeline of the project. So, um, as we move forward and consider our next steps with the second site, which of course impacts this whole West Side organization. Um, and with the Phase One work, uh, we secured OPN as our architect for these projects. And so OPN is going to walk through the work that has been underway um, for the past several months in regards to the new site at Jackson. So we have with us Joe Tursi tonight, Vicky Highland. And I'm not sure if Roger was able to join us as well, uh, but just
Driving.
Okay.
In the car.
Is, uh, their constant feedback and willingness to take, um, input from all of our staff members, uh, throughout this process has been tremendous. So I'll hand it over to you, Joe. And I think you're able to share your screen to share presentation.
Okay, everybody see the screen? Awesome. Okay, well, uh, again, we appreciate the time. Uh, hopefully we'll get through this quickly, but if you have any questions, just let us know. Um, I know you guys are dealing with lots of heavy stuff, so hopefully this will be fun and, uh, give you a little relief from all the, all the heavy lifting you've been doing. So, um, so we're gonna run through a couple things, um, and we'll start with the site. And so, um, we had been working toward a site uh, that was a little longer and actually spanned along the south face of the building, and then we're gonna get some onsite detenage uh, for the water we have to take care of. Uh, in conversations with the city, they were hoping that we could keep the ball diamond, which you can see as an existing ball diamond is right down there, kind of in the southwest corner.
Hey, Joe, I think that maybe we're seeing the preview of your slide, not your full slide deck. Because I think you're on slide number two, but we're still on the first one.
There we go. Is that better? Okay, sorry about that.
No worries.
Thanks, Justin. So originally, we were gonna stretch this parking lot all the way to the end, and we were gonna dump on the, um, Jackson Drive, uh, but the city was hoping that we could keep this baseball diamond on our site, and so we've relocated it just, uh, to the west. And then we've kind of reconfigured the site, uh, to allow for that parking. So we still have uh, either ninety-six to a hundred and, uh, thirteen parking stalls. The district goal was a hundred, so we, we've kind of met that goal. We've got this great drop-off for parents. Uh, this is gonna dramatically improve, um, the traffic patterns in the site. Uh, most of the parents can come up thirty-eighth or even along, uh, Jackson Drive, and then it'll really be a kind of a one-way drive for drop-off or to get into the parking. Um, and then what we've also done is we've pulled the buses off of, uh, Jackson Drive, which again will help all of that traffic pattern and simplify. The only drawback to this site where we couldn't stretch this a little longer is losing some of that onsite detainage, which now will be underground detainage here. Uh, we are still working with the city to see if we can find a slightly better compromise that works better for everybody, uh, but we thought this, um, in all, uh, all phases actually works pretty well. And so you can start to see the existing building sitting right here. So that will be kind of like Coolidge. That'll be the piece when that comes down, we'll put in the parking. And we feel like we've got enough room to get the exist- or the new building behind the existing and really take advantage of that great stand of trees. We're preserving, preserving the sledding hill, which I know is a huge deal to the neighborhood. Um, and then we'll get a playground for the kindergartners, preschoolers, uh, to the southwest and then the one through five kids, uh, to the northwest. And then, uh, we'll show you how that kind of relates to the, um, floor plan. Any questions on the site plan?
I have a question. Um, my, my kids actually attended Jackson, so I, can you show me on here where busing will be? Because as you mentioned, transportation, drop-off pickup has kind of always been an issue, um, with Jackson and other facilities. So I'm, I'm just wondering where that is now.
Yep, that's a great question, Jennifer. So right now it's on the street, and what we've done is we're gonna pull, provide, just like we did at Coolidge, this bus drop-off lane. So they'll actually pull off of Jackson Drive, which will allow the traffic on Jackson to always be moving. And should hopefully clear up a lot of that problem. Uh, the only drawback to us having to shorten this is we originally had five buses along here, and right now we have three. So just like Coolidge, they'll stage the buses for drop-off and pickup.
Great.
Joe, go ahead.
I was just thinking.
This is scary.
Thanks, Gary.
Um, Joe, do we share some of the, is some of this site, uh, the Jackson site land shared with the city as far as parkland? Uh, I know I know we do some with them, some of the other elementaries.
Yes, that's a great question. I should have started with that. So originally, the site, this used to be an L-shaped park. And what we did was we went to the city and asked them if we could take the leg of the L and that became the school property. So there will be a land swap with the city. And they are basically going to deed, like they did at Coolidge, they'll deed a piece of the property over to us. And so that we can get the school and all the associated parking and all the other amenities that we need to get on the site available. And so they will then take what is kind of the fatter leg of the L over here and maintain that as a property. And so that's part of the reason we reconfigured the site was to pull that off so they didn't lose a lot more of that place space for the baseball diamond.
Thank you. That's what I was wondering about that ball diamond. Thank you.
No, thank you for reminding me. I should have started with that piece of it. So. Any other questions? Otherwise I'll move on. Okay, so then first floor plan. We feel like we really have done a pretty good job of making this a much more efficient floor plan than what we were available at Coolidge. Coolidge, we had that long linear site and we really had to kind of take advantage of that L-shaped territory. We've been allowed because of how this site is a little more compact to make the building more compact and more efficient. And yet we've still got a bunch of the great separations that we had at Coolidge. So down in the southeast corner is the gymnasium. Right behind it is the kitchen and some of the support spaces. There's a main set of bathrooms so that the cafeteria, gym and kitchen can all be kind of run independently. There's the main front doors. And unlike Coolidge where we had a separate entrance from bus side and from parent drop off site, all the kids will funnel through this main door. There is a secondary door that will allow for the preschool and AK. And we can get to that in a minute, but this will be the main door that all the kids really kind of come through. Then here's the main office. So this will become a secure vestibule. So once school starts, the interior doors lock. Everybody will have to go through the office to be let into the school or for the kids to come up. Nurse and main office have a great synergy between the receptionists. There's the main conference room. And then we have some of the counselor and family therapist and then a workroom for the teachers and then some of the other teacher spaces on the backside. Cafeteria has a great view to the woods, which we know was very important to everybody in the visioning, that they've got that great stand of woods and they really wanted to kind of incorporate it. There's the main door that separates the private or the public side from the academic. And so down to the south, our south wing is the two AKs and preschool and then a large motor skill with a breakout small classroom space. And then that becomes the storm shelter, which has enough capacity to have all the other kids come down there. So we're leaving the littlest kids and bringing all the other kids to them. There is some behavioral classrooms in Jackson that we didn't have at Coolidge. And so the behavioral classrooms are kind of right in the core, right next to the main office. We have a project room down on first floor. We have our kindergartners on our west wing, so we have the four kindergarten classrooms. They get their own small classroom so that they can break out. They have a small commons and a teaming room. And those also look out to the woods. And so that playground that kindergarteners and AK and preschool share sits right in the corner. Sorry about that. And then when you go back out into the hall and, and go to the north, we've located the principal's office right here at the kind of hub. So they sit and watch the stairs. They can see all the kids going into all the houses. And I know Nick was really excited about being kind of in that central location and, and being able to kind of monitor what's going on and be part of the action. Then we go up to the first and second grade neighborhood. So we kind of are calling it a house when it's one grade in the neighborhood when we're two. So we've got four classrooms for first grade.
Hey, Joe.
Yeah.
Here's Noreen. So to get, let the board kind of see the blueprint just a little better. Would it be possible to either put the slide deck in presentation mode or zoom in a little bit? So they can really see maybe that blueprint a little bit?
Yeah, let me see if I can. Presentation.
Let me go to
Actually, I thought it was on, oh, you know what I did? Here, let me do this.
Joe, I think if you see, if you hit from current slide.
Yeah, I think if I look at right here. Sorry.
I get it. I've been there many times. Yeah. Maybe if you go down to that bottom right cue on the slide deck and you'll see that little full screen. One more over, I think.
Right here?
Will that let it go?
Oh, to the left, past alright, keep, go to the right.
I can't see it. Right there.
This one?
Keep going. That one.
Is that any better?
I wonder if it's the mirror.
I think what it did, let me try one thing here.
I think you shared the wrong one.
I think I shared the wrong one. Sorry. Let me try this. Is that better?
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Pick on screen. Okay, so so do I need to go back over anything back here? Or is it a little easier to see now?
No, I think you're fine to move forward. It's just so that we can see that blueprint. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for telling me I was on the wrong screen. So you can see first grade has their own small classroom and a teaming room. And then they will have cubbies out in the common space. And then second grade has the same. They've got their own small classroom, a teaming room and cubbies out in their space. And then what we've done is we've actually put both of the commons together so that they have a little more common space together.
So excited about that.
Yeah, so this helps kind of, this is part of the reason why we're much more efficient than we were at Coolidge.
And I think too, Joe, to, a few of the things to add about this layout, which I know Noreen is very, very excited about, but when we benchmarked way back when, some of the cool things about this layout allow that collaboration space. And they also allow those kind of more private spaces for pullout services that, you know, whether it's mental health or whether it's Title I or whether, whatever it is, you have kind of those unique spaces, but they're within their classroom pods. So they're not leaving neighborhoods to go someplace different. But also the fact that you had excited, engaged principals that want to be in the heart of the action. If, you know, most schools you go to, the principals are up front and they're in the administration office. But these guys want to be where they're going to be useful and where they're going to see kids interact. And I don't know, I think, I know Noreen's very excited about that, but.
Yep. Yeah, great point, Vicky. The other thing that we're excited about is again, the common theme we heard every time we talked to the teachers and the staff and Nick in particular is they've got this great hill of trees and they wanted to be in the trees. And so the nice thing is that these classrooms really are kind of in the trees. It's going to be really nice because they're engaged with the biggest asset of the site. And this common room looks into those trees as well. So we really feel like most of the kids have a great connection to the trees. So then going upstairs. Which one way?
I just interrupt for a second and point out, maybe for people that don't know that when you're referring to Nick, you're referring to Nick Duffy, who's the current principal at Jackson Elementary. So that when we're, we're talking about Nick having input, it's somebody who's familiar with that community and that school and those students and those teachers and the environment and the possibilities.
And I just want that's exactly right, as well as Ms. Kuba from Truman. The, the two of them have just collaborated so much with their staff around this input process.
Yeah.
They've been fantastic.
They have, and they seem to be on the same wavelength. They, they usually kind of finish each other's sentences. It's been really awesome to work with those two.
Joe, I have a question about the, the window treatments on both the lower level and the upper level. Are there, are there windows that provide natural lighting to those rooms?
There are, Gary. We're big into providing windows because we believe that that natural light is so important to learning and just part of that whole process. Yep. So to be, to answer a second piece of your question, we also know that we have to moderate how much light is in those spaces. So all of the windows in the building will have a roller shade system. And so the, the teachers will have the ability to kind of moderate the amount of light that comes into the rooms as they need to. So, but thank you for a good question. So when we go up to second floor, this is the open space that looks down into the cafeteria. That's the, the open space that's in the gymnasium. There's a large mechanical room, so I'm getting all the really fun stuff. The thing we really love is we found a way to get the library, which has a great south exposure and will have lots of, lots of great light looking out to the south. But then we also get a look through some rather large windows that are in the cafeteria and you'll see an image of that later. And the, the library actually looks down into the cafeteria and then through to the trees beyond. So again, there's a great connection between the library through to the woods and then actually also up to the, the front with great south light. And then we also have the art room and the music room up on second floor. So kind of all the specials are located on the south and have great southern exposure. This is the fifth grade house, so it is separated a little more. And so there's the four classrooms, they get their breakout space, a larger commons and then their smaller teaming room. And then they will be in lockers. And then as you work around the corner, there's another project room. So each floor has its own project room so that the kids can kind of go to the space that is more appropriate to them. And then we have some support space in the core. And then we have a teacher's lounge upstairs so that the teachers that teach up on the second level don't have to try and find a way to get downstairs every day. And then we have our third and fourth grade neighborhood, which is really about the same layout and same experience as the upper level, minus something that we'll show you in some of the images. And then again, they'll be in lockers instead of cubbies. So, but you can start to see we've started to get a little more of the trees on. So you can really see how the trees wrap around the site and really kind of envelop the school. And then there's that start of that sledding hill that we were asked to, to keep and actually wanted to. So any questions on the second level?
Could I ask you to please point out the elevator? I know that ADA intentional design and inclusivity has been a big focus, rightfully so. And Jackson has been problematic because it's, you walk in split foyer. So if you could just point out where that elevator is, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Well, Jennifer, so here's our main staircase and the elevator's right adjacent to it. So it's right in that field of vision when you come out. The one other thing I forgot to mention, we have some kind of bonus space that we have as leftover right here in the middle, which has a great view into that cafeteria. So there's going to be a great kind of synergy between that upper level and kind of giving the energy from down below. We've also included a couple of bathrooms, one to help serve the library, art and music because they don't have a bathroom associated with them. And then one as a staff toilet as well, so they don't, again, have to find a way to get up and down the stairs.
Excellent. Also have a question about that, that teacher's lounge that's on the second floor. Does that have, so a current teacher's lounge usually always has a refrigerator and there's usually a soda machine in there. Sometimes there's an oven that does or doesn't work and a microwave and such. Is this teacher's lounge a eating space teacher's lounge? Or is it a collaborative, like more of a, a teacher's planning area, more of an office space? Or is it, or is it a kind of an eating space?
So right now, we're, we're seeing it used as both and that's what we did at Coolidge. So there will be the amenities to be able to have their lunches stored in there with a sink and a microwave. But we're also trying to preserve a certain amount of counter on this end that they could use to help lay out work and do some of that kind of stuff. Or on days where they have, where they bring in food, then there's a place to put in some crock pots so they can kind of all share in that. So that, that space will kind of double.
Yes.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now the rest are images, so hopefully you're going to like what you see here. And so one of the things that we had talked about was having brick on the base like we did at Coolidge for that kind of durability. So as kids are walking up to it, they don't beat the heck out of it. And then in a cost-saving measure, just like Coolidge, we have a metal panel up on the upper level and it wraps all the way around. And we went to a little deeper kind of tan tone for the brick and a little green shade. And really that was kind of a homage to the trees and trying to represent the trees. And so we're trying to kind of portray that hill. So this is looking from the southwest, that orange area is that playground. There will also be a hardscape right here, which also doubles as our turnaround for the fire trucks. Oops. And then kind of looking from the south, one of the other things that was one of the biggest selling points to the site was again, as you see those trees going up the hill, trying to be able to see through. And so this image is kind of out at the curb, looking back through. And the intent is that you'll be able to actually see through that entrance to the hill beyond and start to see those trees. And so what we're trying to do is we were doing these images so that you could see that as you got closer and closer to the building, there is that connection through the building and that you'll kind of see through it. And, and we've really done a lot of work to work on this canopy. And so originally we had one tall canopy and we really kind of liked it because it, it maybe let you see in a little better, but it wasn't given very good protection. And so we really worked on how we can make a smaller canopy up front that actually offers some protection. And then the canopy up above to kind of help shield that glass from direct glare. And so we feel like we kind of got the best of both worlds. You're going to see a tree theme carried throughout. And so we're going to have this concrete precast panel that is the gym box as well as the wraps around on the kitchen. And we're looking at different forms that can start to invoke some trees. And so just kind of a showing you the, the green metal panel and the, the Spanish brick with that precast. That precast, we're hoping to get more to that tan and then play with the texture of that tree. So a little higher view from the southeast. So you can see where the storm shelter is and the AK precast. And then working around the back. So this orange is the one through five playground. This is the bank of windows that looks out from the cafeteria, which I think you'll get a better view from beyond. This will be where, where we'll have a depress dock here that serves as delivery for the kitchen and for any of the equipment that John gets in the building. We've got a garage door here for outside storage, so that's where they can keep all their exterior equipment. And then working back around, you can start to see how much glass we've tried to get into that cafeteria. So that, that's the one glass wall we have in the building. And we're trying to allow everybody to see out through that cafeteria space into the woods beyond. And then you can see we're, we're really kind of in the trees, so. And then right now, those are what we're leaning to for materials on the exterior. So this is a picture of the brick we're proposing using. This is that green panel. And then this is the corrugated panel that we're thinking about using. And we're thinking in that orientation, or it'd be horizontal. And again, we broke down the scale from a much larger panel that we used over at Coolidge because again, we're kind of trying to bring it down to that tree size in the leaf.
And so that corrugated panel would be the green color?
Yes.
That's just the profile?
So here is the interior of the cafeteria. And we're looking back toward the library up above, the office down below. And then what we've done is we've taken that tree form that's on the exterior precast panels and we've created these tree columns. And then we're going to do a kind of a plank system that will help with the acoustics. And we're going to treat it as a tree canopy. So we're really again trying to invoke the idea of the trees. And then we'll take that tree canopy into that space on the upper level. And so it really will kind of play through and pull the inside to the outside and then try and weave it back into the school. And then this is one of those project rooms on the upper level.
The, the tree motif and the, the application there is really a nice touch. It's really cool.
Yeah, pretty excited about trying to, trying to pull that inside. We're still working on maybe some other potential trees that we might get on this wall. We're also looking at ways to We're also looking at ways to incorporate wood into a railing system. And so some of those things still have to be resolved yet. Uh, but, uh, here is that kind of vestibule that allows the kids, when they go out from class to to go out to their recess and then come back in to eat. And so that's the way into the cafeteria. And then here's where we'll have them hang their coats and have a place to sit. Uh, this cafeteria is a little more generous than what it was at Coolidge. Uh, and so I think there's going to be a better flow tile that, uh, actually operates. Uh, and then you can see that, uh, as you walk down this corridor and there'll be a tree column that kind of separates this walkway from the cafeteria. So there's, there is a little visual separation. But you can see, you can see right up the steps. So if you're going upstairs, you have an easily clearly defined path. You can see into the kindergarten. And when you get into the space and turn right, you can see right into the, uh, one-two house. So. Uh, so this would be the lower level commons that serves the first and second grade. So you can see some of the first grade classrooms. And just like we did at Coolidge, we're going to get, um, windows in from, uh, outside classrooms into that interior common space. Uh, some of them have great views. Some of them have more of a view of the, uh, locker spaces. But all of them have a good way to start to, uh, have a monitoring, uh, what goes on on that outside. So the kids don't just run free out there. Uh, and then you can see.
I really like how it's so open. It's, I like that. It's a nice look.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we just, we really pushed and pulled to get as much space in those commons available as we could. So. Um, and then you can see the, the, uh, stair to the north. So each of the houses has a stair from the second floor out for, um, exiting purposes. But you can start to see that you really have a great connection to the outside and you'll get that view through those stairs and through those windows to the outside from this space. And then you'll also get that far view through the classrooms, through the windows beyond. So we really feel like as much as it would have been nice to invert this, this is probably the best way to go. And, uh, it's going to give the kids a great, uh, central space to use. Uh, so then the only difference between the first level and the second level is on the second level, what we'd like to propose is opening up the structure. And since those older kids would allow them to start to understand, well, how does the building work? And here's the structure and here's how it's heated and cooled. And there's the electrical. And here's these cable trays and that's what drives all of it. And so we, we're hoping that we can use an acoustical deck so the sound doesn't get away from us. But really kind of expose that space and let the volume be a little bit bigger. The kids are bigger, so we felt like it'd be nice to allow that volume to take place in that common space. And then finally, uh, this was, um, the first stab at our, uh, interior material palette. Uh, we had four selections and we kind of borrowed the best of all of them. But we're really trying to kind of invoke a biomimicry and and really kind of pull natural materials. So we're going to try and find a way to use these pebbles and try and find unique ways to use wood that's got a texture to it. We are trying to find carpets that feel like the light that's dappled through the loo. And then start to introduce pops of color in that kind of idea of the light coming through the trees and, um, and then just kind of a more natural blue and green palette, uh, to kind of represent the trees in the sky. And so this is our first stab. Brittany, who was on Coolidge, is starting to refine this. And we're really starting to kind of find places to use some of these kind of fun textured, uh, pieces. And, uh, kind of use those as wayfinding devices around the school. And then, as always, just so everybody knows, we're always working toward time and budget. Uh, right now, we have just gotten done with our design development. That went out on Friday, which is why this is such a good meeting. So we really feel like we have the bones and the direction for the school. Um, and now we're going to start working on the CD. So we're going to start working toward how does this all come together in terms of detailing and everything. Uh, in two weeks, we'll receive our estimate from, uh, the third-party estimator we do just to make sure we aren't, uh, getting away from ourselves. And that we, uh, kind of really truly trying to respect that budget. Um, and, uh, we've really worked hard to pull this cost down. I know you guys have had some things happen this year that no one could foresee. And so we're trying to find ways to make this as economical as we can and yet have a parity to what we did at Coolidge. So. Would you like to look back at anything? I know I kind of flew through those images, but I wanted to make sure and to chew up your whole night.
I was going to ask the board if they had any questions and we'll kind of do a round robin. Uh, if you could ask, I mean, if you have additional questions, I can limit it to two. And if they have questions for you, thank you for the presentation. Uh, truly appreciated to let us kind of know where we're at. But I'd like to start with Director Tominski to see if he has any questions.
I don't necessarily have any questions. It just, it's, it's gorgeous. Makes me want to go back to elementary school. The spaces just look like, uh, they're going to be so fun to learn. So I can't wait to visit the facility. So again, like, I like President Elbow said, I mean, those open spaces. You know, just the, the, the potential in in those areas. Absolutely love what you're doing with the trees, the natural landscape. So I know that, um, I can only imagine families that are familiar with that, uh, that particular school and that piece of land to be able to, um, to enjoy that, to get the kids outside and, um, seeing that natural, um, you know, landscape around them, I think would be great. So. No, I'm just, uh, no, no questions. Really just, um, really appreciate the, the hard work and the presentation tonight.
That natural part. We were trying hard with all the trees that were lost with the derecho. We thought, boy, if anyone has an art connection that could do something fun with a tree that we could, would kind of commemorate this design.
Yeah, those opportunities. Yeah.
Yeah. Just transparently, I reached out to Director Tuminsky about this very topic.
Oh, did you?
Okay.
Just like who are the artists that we know? Who are the creatives? And, um, just, yeah, community connection. So, um, I think we're still, you know, we're still in, um, some process of getting some, get some things going. But, uh, love, love to be able to put that, you know, just that element that transferred from the outside. And then that come the inside. It's just, it's, um, yeah, it's gorgeous. So appreciate the work.
Uh, Director Newman?
I don't have any questions right now. Um, my compliments to the design team. I think it's great and I love the natural elements. And I'm excited for the students and staff who will be there.
Thank you.
Uh, Director Merschbruck, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes. Uh, my question, my first question is for, uh, the administration actually. Um, and I wanted to know, was there any thought to, you know, um, moving up the paws before Jackson? Uh, just due to the impact of the derecho on our buildings, you know, are we? You know, I ask because I know that the facilities master plan committee put a lot of time into examining the needs of each building before deciding which ones to build new on and which ones to repurpose. And are we confident that, uh, the state of the buildings is similar enough to what it was before the huge environmental disaster affected all of them, um, that, you know, we would make the same decision in current situations? That's my first question.
A great question. Uh, so what we're finding with the, um, derecho, well, I'd say it's hard to say if it's derecho and pandemic together of our population, the impact on our population. What we're seeing so far is that, um, this particular community or group of communities was not significantly impacted our enrollment. Um, it's, uh, it has impacted our enrollment in some of our other buildings. Again, that's hard to do a dot-to-dot connect to say, is this the reason why we've lost some families? However, the, one of our buildings that is, uh, directly adjacent to these, this trio of buildings is Hoover. And what we're seeing at Hoover was that increase in population, um, the past couple of years, as well as Van Buren, an increase in population specifically around our, um, English language learning, um, students and our refugees and immigrant families. And so we are seeing an impact on that particular population, perhaps moving to another location in town. Not significant at this point in time to impact the, the overall facility master plan for this trio. But I do think you ask a really good question, Director Merschbruck. I think we're going to have to assess that pause. It's appropriate uh, after this trio of buildings to see what the next move might be as the rest of our population may have been great, more greatly impacted. But not with these three, um, buildings and neighborhoods at this point in time.
Um, that's, that's good to know about the enrollment. But what I specifically wanted to know, um, actually about the physical conditions of the buildings. Because there was a lot of consideration put into the cost, you know, to replace each building as it stood when the master plan was, uh, drawn up. But with the damage to the buildings, are we confident that those physical conditions haven't changed in such a way to, you know, throw into doubt which buildings we would want to rebuild, which buildings we would want to, you know, even potentially change course and keep? That was my question.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on the physical part of the building. I'm going to hand that over to John Galbraith to, um, better answer. So, um, uh, are you still there, John?
Yes, I am.
Could you, uh, respond to Director Merschbruck's question about, um, specifically our elementary schools and damage, uh, with the derecho?
Yeah, really at our element, elementary schools, the damage, um, really consisted of roofing damage, um, no structure damage, uh, very, I'm going to say minor interior damage compared to what we've seen at the secondary level. Um, so as far as what buildings we'd want to keep or replace, um, does the derecho change that? Really? No. Um, we've had roofs to put on buildings and, um, that was probably roughly 90% of the damage that was done at the elementary schools.
All right. Thank you. Uh, my second question was about Truman and the repurposing of Truman. Uh, I wanted to know if there is any further discussions that have been happening, um, you know, about what would go at the Truman site? Uh, who would be interested in it? If we are interested as a district in doing anything else? And what occurred to me the other day when I was thinking about this was that we as a district, um, you know, have a direct interest in what goes at the Truman site, um, even if we're not doing anything there because our, one of our West Side Middle Schools is basically right across the street. And so development in that neighborhood is going to affect our school population, you know, as well as the neighborhood itself. Um, and so I'm just wondering, is there any thoughts on that? Or is there anything that we can do to, you know, assure that the type?
Thank you for that question. And I would say, um, what has surfaced, especially in the past six months, has, uh, surfaced some questions about the repurposing of Truman. Specifically what we are finding, and this again was due to pandemic-related situations, is our increased enrollment in our district homeschool program, which are our teachers servicing a homeschool program, as well as this, uh, our virtual academy, uh, which was just launched right in the spring. And granted, we're presented these as options to our families in response to the pandemic. However, we have had increased enrollment and I'm wondering about the impact of that over time. Currently, both of those programs are housed at Wilson, but Wilson too has had an increased enrollment and we're running out of space at Wilson. So we're already asking our question about those two programs, where they might go. I'm wondering, that's a possibility of this particular building be able to service, um, those programs. And then in addition, we've had, um, increased community conversations around daycare and preschool and a, a great desire uh, to be, um, collaborative with some of our local businesses. Um, for example, I know that, um, the MedCor is looking for more support with, um, daycare. Now granted, proximity wise, that's not ideal for this particular building. However, this is a one-story building. It is ideal for daycare preschool environment. Um, and it's smaller. And so I think that we do have some district programming or partners to service education or childcare needs that we really need to, um, consider. So I think our needs have changed, um, over the past year certainly. And so those have been the, I would say, uh, kind of sidebar conversations, nothing direct at this point in time, but certainly the considerations I'm seeing from the district point of view.
Noreen, just a quick question about that is, will it be, um, will it take the opening of both Jackson and Coolidge before that transition at Hoover would, or, excuse me, Truman would take place?
Yes. So the, in the coming fall, um, the new site at Coolidge would be open. There's only one program. We would be transitioning from Truman's current state to that new building, and that is a special education program. We built specifically for that program at that new site location, but the rest of the Truman population would stay put until the second building is open.
So that is a, a, a little bit a ways in the future then, I guess would be my point.
Two years, two years.
Uh, Director Garlock, do you have any questions?
I do have a question. Um, Joe and Vicky, thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm like the other directors, very glad to see the incorporation of the natural landscape into the theme of the building. Um, I like the use of trees and nature and the pebbles and the, the textured wood. Um, so just sort of in that same vein, it seems like as we show our appreciation for the natural world that we're living in, I'm also wondering if there have been any special considerations for reducing our carbon footprint as we close these older buildings and are building new buildings? Are we actually, and maybe you can't answer this specifically, but, um, are, are we making any efforts to reduce our carbon footprint? Are we using especially efficient HVAC systems? Are we looking at the, the type of glass that we're putting in the buildings to make them the most energy efficient that we can? Are, are any of those things top of list considerations as we do these, um, designs?
Yeah, that's a great question, Cindy. So, um, we work, uh, really closely with our engineers and then we actually work with a, a separate company that, is very beneficial because they actually give you the rebates for, uh, the improvements to over code, um, called Willdan. And so we have gone through that process with them. So we have high-performance glass, um, we do it with low E. And so we're trying to get that glass as good as we can. It's never as good as a wall, but it's more beneficial to have the light than that. Uh, we don't super insulate the walls, but we do better than code for the walls and the roof. Um, and then we are doing, the biggest driver is always, uh, the mechanical system. So we are employing a, a geothermal system. And then we've done a hybrid system that'll be similar to what we do at, did at Coolidge, where we'll have a central heating plant that will take out, uh, to each of the individual classrooms. So each classroom is its own zone. So that will help with the efficiency so that as classrooms are being occupied and not occupied, they can go up and down in the temperature swing, you know, within reason. Uh, we also have used, uh, LED lights almost exclusively in the building now. And that is one-third the, uh, power requirement of a standard light. So we've really tried to dial the building as well as we can to use energy as efficiently as possible. Um, and so that's the biggest carbon driver. Um, we also are looking at materials, uh, constantly to find, uh, materials with lowered embodied energy, which again is a reduction in carbon. And so, uh, trying to import as much of that wood as we can and in the proper locations, uh, is always a good thing because it's a, it's a carbon sink. Um, and so we're always looking to do that. Most of the aluminum is recycled. Most of steel has some component recycled to it as well. So, yeah, we, we take that very seriously. We will probably be, uh, I, I haven't, I can't remember what the EUI for the building was, but I think it's, um, it's between 60 and 70% better than code. So, uh, we're doing as much as we can to get it as close to zero as we can get it.
Okay, cool. That, that makes me very happy. I feel like these new building projects are a very rare opportunity that we have to be environmentally friendly. So thank you for those considerations. And that, that's my only question.
Okay, Director Anhau, do you have a question?
Turn my mic on. Yes. Uh, a, a couple of, uh, things. Uh, one, thanks, Joe, for a great presentation and great work by OPN. Um, I think you, uh, uh, I think in the building, in the way you've, you're building the building, a lot of good science, uh, projects for students at that building. To study conservation and, and, uh, energy efficient and so on. Um, I appreciate your, the comments about, uh, trying to use, um, some soft textures and so on, uh, on the interior. I guess I just have a, a, a bit of caution about, I know some of, uh, well, uh, Jackson for one, that some of those buildings on the interior, uh, we did a lot of rough, uh, uh, sod cedar and so on, which, uh, has a nice texture, but it's, um, it's terribly hard. has a nice texture, but it's, it's terribly hard to clean. Really dust collective and so on and grooved and, and so on. So just, I don't know, I guess a word of caution about how the textures are used and so on, that we also make it efficient to keep clean.
We've been trying to work with John on that.
In our office and we make sure that we look at all those kinds of things because we're very, the cleanliness and, well, that's a great texture, that's a great product, but let's put it out of the reach of kids, put pencils in it or whatever it might be. They're very creative creatures, aren't they?
I, I just, yeah, I guess from past history, I just had to bring it up. I know you're, you're very conscious of it, but I hate to see too much of repeated mistakes. And I know you're, you're thinking ahead. I think that's it, other than, there's a lot of flat, there's a lot of flat roof. I've brought it up before, solar power, but.
Yeah. And I wish we could, actually we had, we had some roofs that were sloped so that we weren't using just the flat roofs. And unfortunately, in our first round of budgeting in the SD phase, we were a little over budget. And so that was one of the things that we had to pull out. And so the thing, and we had some great clear story glass and it was just, it was unfortunately too easy of a budget target. So we're, we're going to work to get there though. I'm with you. If we can do anything.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I want to, I want to comment to all of your questions and everything. You guys are so lucky to have John as your facilities director because he's hard, he knows what's out there and he's always questioning. So while we hold each other accountable in our office and we have a lot of discussions and debates and, and cajoling, John just comes in and said, yep or no, this will work for this school. So you guys are very fortunate to have someone who's so astute in those things.
You know, the, the adage of kid tested, mother approved. In our system, it's Noreen tested, John approved.
Vice President Bortading, do you have a couple of questions?
I do. One of them actually has already been kind of addressed by Director Garlock's question. I'm just wondering, I, I wanted to just give a nod that I appreciate the eco-friendly design and the conscious thought that's been put behind that. Very much appreciate that, think that is responsible, that something we should be doing as a district and modeling that behavior for our community. So I guess that's not really a question. My question is about, can we look at some shared space? I know that right now, again, having had children that went through Jackson, the PTA has an entire shed to themselves that's on that Jackson property. So I know that we've intentionally looked at shared space with the ability for the gym to be kind of a public area possibly at some point. Is that kind of where outside groups and supports will be having some space or is it someplace else? That's my question.
I'll take it. And feel free administrators to help out, but our intent was that the gym would be something that would be used by the public in conjunction with the cafeteria. Again, that's why we kind of put it up on this corner so it was very prominent, very easy to use. You can lock it off here and no one can get to any of the rest of the space. There will be a before and after school storage here. We're looking at some additional storage for sound systems and so that everything is kind of self-contained up in this area. So the intent would be that as soon as you have the ability to use it for Cub Scouts or, you know, whatever, basketball teams and volleyball teams and whatever, it would be easy for it to be open after hours and used by the public. Yep.
And I think that's important. I think for us to be a community school and be responsible to our community and that surrounding neighborhood, providing that additional space for meeting and recreation is valuable. So I just have a question about having, having taught with some of our littlest learners, does that pre-K and K wing, do they have their own bathrooms in classrooms or is it a, is it a community bathroom that's located outside?
No, I should have said that. So each of the classrooms, these two classrooms will share a bathroom. This classroom has its own bathroom. Then the two kindergartens share a bathroom. So each pair of the kindergarteners share a bathroom. And they also share storage between the two rooms and storage between the two rooms. This one, because it's out by itself and it's a preschool, they have their own bathroom and their own storage room. Yeah, so that's a great, great question. And then within the houses or within the neighborhoods, we have a set of bathrooms for each side.
And they, I think, Joe, you mentioned, they also, those little guys have kind of a large motor area so that if it's raining or it's inclement, they have a space where they can get their little indoor balls or trikes or whatever that might be out.
Yep. Yep. And so then it's also got that large motor room has a connection to the outdoors so that they can get out if they, if they need to take any of that equipment outside.
That's great. I really appreciate the thoughtful design and taking into consideration what all our, our various age learners need. So thank you.
And I'd like to say thank everyone, great questions. I want to make sure that we've answered, board, you've had a chance to answer the questions. And if so, we can move on to our next agenda item. Are there any more?
I just want to say thank. I have one more question. This is Director Merschrock. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My question is, I guess for Dave Nicholson, what is the total cost of our two new elementary schools in tier one, phase one? You know, what's the all-in total cost after all building considerations? Any interest that we have to pay on the debt? Just looking for that number.
Well, I, Dexter, I really couldn't give you the number that includes all the interest payments all in on the debt to pay off the buildings. But as of right now, we know this budget we're looking at for Jackson, the, the budget is in the ballpark of 25, approaching $26 million in that ballpark range for Jackson. The Coolidge Elementary is in the, gosh, I'm drawing a blank on the top, the number off the top of my head right now, but that is approaching 24. Joe, do you have that number off the top of your head?
I don't, but I was thinking the same thing, Dave, like 24, 24.2, somewhere in there.
Yeah, yes, over, low over $24 million for that. That's the all-in for the construction and the estimated cost of furnishing and all of that. But the cost to pay off all the debt that we're doing for those two buildings, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
Hang on. So the two combined though, it's going to be north of 50 million, everything all considered, it sounds like.
Yes.
Okay. And so my last question is really a comment for my fellow board members. You know, that's a lot of money and, you know, I want the West Side neighborhood to have new elementary schools as much as anyone else, but when that money's coming in from the Save Fund to pay off these debts and to pay for these schools, you know, it's a lot of money that we're projected to get with the extension of Save, but it's not an infinite amount of money. And so every dollar that we spend building new elementary schools in one spot is potentially a dollar that's not going to somewhere else in our community. And so what I'd like to say for looking forward on the facilities plan, if we're going to move ahead with the Jackson site as it appears, I think we need to consider not just the buildings as they are now and not just whether or not we close down certain buildings and build new buildings, you know, at all, but rather what else could we potentially do if we put money into maintaining and improving our buildings as they are now? What else could we do, you know, with those funds, working with our partners in the city, you know, where the district is, that would improve quality of life and more importantly, through improving quality of life for our families and students, improve the type of education we're getting in the buildings, whether they be old buildings or new buildings? And so I'd just like my fellow board members to consider that, you know, when we're discussing these things moving forward.
Thank you for that comment, Director Merschrock. I appreciate that. Next, we'll move on to a moment of silence. Linda Nagle. I can see you, okay.
Yes, hello. I'm so sorry, I'm not sure if we have representation. I, can we, ooh, I'm so sorry, I'm not sure we have the right person on the call today to do the moment.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
Nope, not.
Slipped my mind.
Okay, that's okay. So with no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great evening.